Thank you. Good evening, everybody. The officer we're trying to hire, our candidate is Mr. Wayne Harris. He comes with many years of experience. He's an instructor in many different things. More so community policing background and investigation background. So I'll relay over to him and let him introduce himself as well. I'm Mr. Harris.
Okay. Hello, everybody. My name is Wayne Harris. Fifty-two years old. I have fifteen, look, fifteen-plus years of police experience. I've been a supervisor, community-oriented policing officer. You know, I like to get out and engage with the community. It's the only way that you get positive results is engaging. So they can trust you and you can trust them and they know that you're not going to do nothing crazy and you know. And I just, you know, I'm just looking forward to hopefully coming on board at Edmiston. And just bringing, you know, my knowledge base and then learning as much as I can about that community. And just getting along to make it, you know, make it a very good relationship with me, Edmiston and the community.
Thank you. Thank you. So let me introduce you to our council. We have with us tonight a council member, Betsy McCully.
How you doing, Wayne?
Hello. We also have council member Sarah Turville.
Hello.
And we have council member Hillary Chester.
Hello.
And we have Mr. Johnson, who is John Johnson. He's on via telephone.
Okay, okay. Hello, Ms. Johnson.
Hello, good evening.
And then we have Ms. Avery Gray, who is our town clerk.
Okay, hello.
And Mr. Rodney Barnes, who is our town administrator.
Hello, sir. Good to meet you all.
Yep, and I don't think I missed anybody. You can't see our videographer, Rick Ray.
He's here. So thank you for that introduction. And what we like to do is have the council actually meet you and chat with you just briefly. To learn a little bit more about you before we decide to move forward and take the acting chief's recommendation for hire. So I'm going to open the floor to any council member. You did tell us pretty much a little bit of your background and your, what you stand by. And what you enjoy, which is the community policing. And that's something that we really, really push in the town. But give us a little bit about your experience. How many years of service have you provided on the police department? And we can go from there.
Okay.
Counsel. Would you say, Mr. Johnson?
No, I thought I heard you say fifteen years.
Yes.
Okay. So fifteen years, municipal, sheriff, okay.
Municipal, municipalities, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Counsel?
What other department were you with, or these fifteen years?
I started District Heights, Family Heights for a couple of years, and then the rest was in the city of Seaplaisen, most recently.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
I'm not letting them off that easy. Come on, y'all. Y'all want me to run my mouth?
I think I thoroughly interviewed him, but I told him that the council would ask him a few questions. So if you, if you have another question, McCully, by all means.
Okay. You're coming to Edmiston. What attracted you to come here?
Actually, I like, I like Edmiston because it's a smaller department. And you actually have the opportunity to make a difference. And what I mean by that is, if you work for a large agency and you're bombarded with calls for service constantly, you don't have the opportunity to, after you have interaction with a person, whether it's on a call for service or just a subject stop or traffic stop, to explain to them why you did what you did, to give them the options without being rushed off or just out, without getting in your car and just pulling off. So you actually have an opportunity to have the time to, I think it's making a difference because a lot of times people, as supervisors, people have been so upset with my officers. And it's because the officer just, you know, came across a little abrasive and then just got in the car and drove off on them. And I think if people know why something is happening and the reason it's happening or happening to them, or why we're doing something as an officer, I believe it just makes, it makes a difference. And, and, and they can appreciate it more because sometimes people just don't know why we do what we do.
You just said, as a supervisor, what rank did you carry?
I left when I was a corporal for Seaplaisen. And I ran a squad, yeah, squad of three officers.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yes, and one of the things that I think he slightly alluded, alluded to it is some of the, his employees or those he supervised, did you mention that they have gotten upset with you based on your ethic or your strong work ethic? Can you explain a little bit about that?
Yes, ma'am. Just, I, I like to hold people accountable. And I don't believe that me, as, when I was a supervisor, I was any better than anybody under me, that, you know, that I, that I supervised. If I made, if I made a traffic stop, I wrote the tickets. If I, if I, you know, had, it was the first to a call and I needed to make an arrest, I would do that. And I noticed a lot of supervisors will deal, what we call in law enforcement, to punt something off, which is have the junior person take it or somebody under you take it. Well, I just felt like, you know, I can, I can impound a car. I can make an arrest. Nothing, nothing's above me and I can still supervise while I'm doing it. And if they made mistakes, you know, if they did something really stupid or egregious, then I checked them. And, you know, professionally, we checked them in front of them. If they, they became cross disrespectful to a citizen, I, I pulled them aside and said, hey, look, you need to apologize. We don't operate like that. That's not, that's not how we do business. And, and they didn't really like it too much, but I can say that when I did it a few times, that most of the nonsense stopped when I was on the scene. It was no more coming up, you know, belligerent to, to, to the community or anything like that. It kind of, it kind of nipped it in the bud. And I checked a few of them respectfully and professionally and had them do make, make, apologize. And that, you know, that helped a lot.
Yep. Thank you. That goes a long way. Go ahead, Mr. McCully.
Well, I'm going to see if anybody else wants to chime in because, you know, it sounds like if they're all eating breakfast and there's a call, he's probably the first one out the door to the call. And I like that.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
But I will come back and get the, you know, the breakfast.
And I will say, one of the things that was mentioned, Officer Harris, was that he likes to be in the street. He likes the streets. He enjoys communicating with the residents. Just that interaction. So again, that's something that we really want to push or that we do push in Edmiston. The other thing is, he is in Prince George's County. He's, he's, he lives in Prince George's County, which is another goal of ours as well as a desire of our residents. So should, should he need to get here quickly, he won't have to travel cross-country to get here with us. So that's something that we really desired here in the town of Edmiston. Ms. Turville, you unmuted. You had a question or a comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry if I missed it. Sheriff, can you tell us again where you were immediately prior to applying for this position?
Well, most recently, I was, I was CDL driver, CDL licensed. I was, I was driving a recycling truck.
Okay. And then prior to that, what was the?
Seaplaisen.
I worked for City of Seaplaisen.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to keep you on any longer than if anyone else has any comments, questions. And if that's a no.
Oh, I have one question. I have one question. How, how did you get along with the chief over there?
What, is he pleasant?
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, I, I didn't like some of the things that started to happen after his tenure, but we, we, you know, we were okay. I knew him before he was the chief. But I, I would work, I would work secondary employment and he actually was a security guard. And I, I knew him from back then and we, we got along with no problems. And when he, when he first got there, he kind of relied on me to do some background investigations for him to hire a few people that he wanted to put in place. So it was, it was no problem. And just, you know, things went, went a little south with him as far as the department, not with me and him, but with the department and some things that were going on. But that, that kind of was unrelated to me. But I had no, no issues with him personally.
That's good. And he's referring to Chief Martin?
Yes.
No, I thought Harris was over.
Right, I know. But he's referring to Chief Martin, though. Chief Martin was there before Harris took over.
Right.
That's, I just wanted to clear that part up. Okay. All right then. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. It's a pleasure. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all and hope I can get in.
All right. Thank you, Acting Chief Beal, for presenting him. You can feel free to, this is our work session. And we'll have our town meeting after which, and you can feel free to hang on. We're just having this open meeting, have conversation, or you can sign off with no problem. I see you're driving. Are you sitting in the car for, for quietness or?
Me?
Uh huh. Are you in the car?
Yes, yeah, I, I pulled over. Yeah, I, I pulled over. Yeah, I pulled over. Yeah, I, I ran out to get my wife her prescription. So I just pulled over here. So, you know, wanted to have, wanted to be, you know, undivided attention.
Right.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so you can finish your honeydew list. We like that.
Okay, okay. Thanks again, okay. All right, y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, bye bye.
All righty. Thank you, counsel. Any comments from that?
Well, he, he's definitely friendly enough. I mean, he has that personality of, you know, happy-go-lucky. I like that.
Mr. Mr. Beal, he's already completed the majority of background and everything. Yeah, you might want to unmute yourself.
I didn't know. I was muted. I'm sorry. Yeah, he's already completed the majority of everything that we needed to keep moving forward.
So, uh, let me see. I know that counsel may be concerned, especially when you hear Seaplaisen. Acting Chief Beal has talked with him. I also talked with him in reference to that. I know it alerted us. And we have to keep in mind, sometimes people, when you're in a situation such as what was advertised in the news practically, when that is going on, I think a lot of times you just want to be out and away from the foolishness. And I believe that was part of, of course, I asked that question and that was part of what was said. So I don't want to, yeah.
Yeah, so it was, it was a lot of people that left Seaplaisen after the news briefing. Majority of the staff that was underneath Chief Martin, it's all about the different departments as of today, actually. So they're actually starting a whole new regime underneath Chief Harris to run a different program.
You said Chief Harris is running a different program?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I would say so. Yeah.
Okay. I, I have no problem because all jobs are like that, you know, when someone else takes over.
Yeah.
You might decide that you don't want to stick around. You'll find something else.
Sometimes in places, there is just too much mess going on. So hopefully, you know, we won't have that. And him coming, I, I even mentioned about being the supervisor and coming on as a line officer. And he understands his, his role as a line officer. Prior to coming here, he wasn't operating as a police officer. So I think once you have a certain maturity, it is our hope that once you are, you know, you have a certain maturity, you learn how to follow. And that's the best way to lead in most cases. And so I don't know that, I don't know if Acting Chief Beal sensed anything, but I did not sense anything when I spoke with him. That would be like a turn off, like he wanted to take, take control.
No, I didn't sense it at all. I, I ran into him a couple of times when I was with PG County. And one thing I can say is that he was a community-oriented policeman. He was always out at all the events and stuff like that. So when that saw his name pop up, I said, we gotta grab him. And he does a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge and a lot of certifications as well.
Good. Very good. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on. We'll move forward. So that we can get through our agenda at six o'clock. So that was good. As we go through the agenda, the next item would be the minutes. The approval of the minutes, the work session, July eighth, July eighth regular session, and August twenty-ninth closed session. And then following after that is the consideration of approval for the mural. It's the second mural, I believe, by Django. Am I correct? That needs restoring, like we had to do with the plumber mural. The one that we moved, actually, you know, it's weathered, it's weathered the storms. And so we need to restore it. So are there any questions concerning that?
Yep.
Pricing?
It's the mural that depicts the history of the town. It's got our first mayor on it. It's got our Japanese-American mayor on it. It's got pictures that it hung on the fence at Dinko Auto on Decatur Street for years. And unfortunately, when these murals were framed, they weren't framed waterproof. And water has leaked in and, and before it's, you know, destroyed, it needs to be restored, just like the plumber mural needed. And, and again, I don't think it needs to go back on the fence. It needs to go in a better location that has more protection for it. So.
Yeah, all right.
Good. And the cost is fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five.
Does that include the restoration, excuse me, the restoration work and all of the sort of like the, the hardware of the framing and the, the kind of structure of the framing?
Correct, even hanging it.
Oh, even installation? Oh, okay.
Correct.
That's nice.
Uh, okay. Any more questions? Concerns? Nope, nope, nope. All right. The next item is our gem. It's with the Maryland Department of Energy grant funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand. And the vehicle's total cost to the town is twenty-one thousand two hundred and fifty. And we're proposing to use the ARPA funds. The grant is providing thirty-seven fifty. So.
Actually, Mayor, Mayor got an update on the funding, I mean, on the cost. It's actually twenty-two four sixty-one. And so our share is eighteen thousand seven eleven. The grant's three thousand seven hundred and fifty. And we're proposing to have our funds come out of our ARPA funds.
So to the town, it's, it's less than the twenty-one. It's eighteen.
Correct. Eighteen seven eleven.
Right. To be, to potentially use our ARPA funds. If the council agrees, the grant is going to take care of twenty-five thousand of it.
Thirty-seven fifty.
I'm sorry, thirty-seven fifty. No, uh, yeah, thirty-seven fifty. I'm sorry. So the total cost is twenty-five thousand. We'll cover eighteen, the grant thirty-seven hundred. It's a small grant, but it's a grant.
Excuse my ignorance, but what is a passenger vehicle? What does that mean? I'm sorry.
Four seats. Two, two, like the one we have and then two in the back.
I sent out to each of you a copy of the picture of it and the detailed information. It is a Gem Utility Model E4, and it is designed to transport passengers. So the idea behind why we applied for it was to use it for events. We rented golf carts for night out. We're renting golf carts for Unity Rally. We're, we're going to be renting other golf carts for the future. So for Edmiston Day. And so this would provide that for us to shuttle folks back and forth. And then obviously for the mayor and you as council members to take people around in the community. It's amazing how many people like to just tour, tour Edmiston, see some of our things. So.
So it would negate the need for us to rent golf carts anymore?
Correct.
We don't rent them too often, but when we know we're going to have a larger event and we have to use that south parking lot, I just called it that. I don't know what, I don't know if it's south or north. It's actually north. When we have to use the north parking lot, sometimes we have individuals that would rather, or it would be better on their body, not to walk from the parking lot to the field. And then also, I've had the opportunity to host a few officials or, well, county officials or legislators. And sometimes they bring their aide or they'll bring someone else who's interested in just coming with them or, or taking pictures. So I can't always take them in. I think the last time I had to take our pickup. So what a great way to show off our environmental appreciation than to use our gem. And then also we'll use it for other functions. And so it, the, the difficult decision or the decision that I'm looking for is, or the conversation is about using our ARPA funds. Is it okay? Do you agree? Do you have questions about it?
I think it's a great use of the money.
Thank you, Ms. McCully.
Can I ask, what is the, not including this purchase, what is the status of, like, the ARPA funds? Like, what, like the tranche of, of funding that we got and then, you know, because we've been doing like bits and pieces here and there, paying for things with ARPA funds. And we had some kind of big ideas that were going to be bigger ticket items. And I just want to make sure we're not like shipping away at this.
So a good question, Councilmember Turvill. We, we received a total of one million four hundred sixty-eight thousand thirty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. We've purchased a cruiser for thirty-five thousand seven ninety, the pickup for twenty-six thousand two ninety-three. Our reader board, and if you haven't seen our reader board, it's all installed and working and Ash is putting up messages right and left and having fun. Twenty-four thousand eight forty-seven, our tree inventory and our traffic study. And those were forty-two seven seventy-five and seventy-five. So anyway, that, that totaled up to two hundred and four thousand dollars of that money. We have kind of, at this point, indicated town hall renovation and architectural fees is eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So I've kind of pulled that aside. So as of right now, uncommitted funds are three hundred and seventy-five thousand. We anticipated doing about two hundred thousand dollars for the stormwater flood mitigation grants that we're getting, program that we're getting ready to introduce the end of the month. So we, we still have funding available to use for this particular purchase.
Thank you. Is that, any other questions, concerns? While Ms. Turvill spins that around a little bit. All right, there's no questions. Now, is this something that we think we want to vote on?
Well, in, in regular meeting, you will, yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean. I'm asking, I'm sorry, I wasn't asking you, Mr. Barnes.
Oh.
I was asking the council, their feeling, their thought. Do they feel, I, I don't know if this is a question for you. Is it some more info to provide? Do you feel it might not be necessary to have the vehicle? Not necessary to use this amount of funding? Should we not use ARPA funds? Should, do we have it in the budget? We want to use our ARPA funds for something else. We have that freedom to say yay or nay. Doesn't necessarily.
For me, it's not, I mean, this is like small potatoes. I guess for me, the bigger conversation is about a nearly one million dollar renovation town hall. I really want to make sure that we're being careful about how we're spending the money in a way that we make sure is benefiting our residents to the maximum extent possible.
Mr. Johnson, Mayor got dropped off. He's calling back in.
Okay. So we can decide, that's for sure. That, that's really good input, Ms. Turvill. We definitely, definitely can decide that, or think about when we're using the ARPA funds. Are we going to use it basically for our residents? Or is this, I'm looking at the gem as something for our residents, the town as a whole? Not necessarily just for the residents. So is that the focus that we want to have? That when we use these ARPA funds, it's, it's strictly for the residents? And I'm, yeah. For the residents or where the residents benefit, such as we do things for the police department, but definitely the residents benefit? Go ahead, Ms. Turvill.
Yeah, I mean, I think you can make, I, I completely understand that perspective that, you know, like a renovation of town hall is ultimately something that would benefit the community. But I'm thinking about like the most immediate needs of our residents. And I'm wondering if two hundred thousand dollars for a grant program is enough, given the gravity of the flooding problem that we have? And how much mitigation people are going to have to do? Because I think now, you know, I think we're talking about more than like gutters for folks, right? I mean, I think people are going to need to start like elevating their, you know, their, their HVAC units and water heaters and whatever else might be in their basements. Like, I'd like, I'd like us to think through, you know, maybe putting more money aside so that residents can directly benefit to avoid what is the most pressing problem facing our community. I just, I just want to put that out there for us to, to think about.
Yeah, I get you. I think when, and I don't know if you mentioned it, 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 it comes out to about two thousand, Mr. Barnes? About two thousand per resident. Now, we don't have a whole, whole, whole lot of money in ARPA funds. The other thing with our flood mitigation, some residents are going to need, going to have to, in order to upgrade. See, there has to be some type of, I think it's so much more detailed, Ms. Turvill and council, when we're talking about assisting our residents. We definitely want to do that and we're definitely going to do that. But there is so many different levels of aid that the residents need. Just one resident, I'm not going to say any names or any. Just one resident, I'm not going to say any names or anything. I don't think it's a violation. But one resident I know of needs, um, th- there's some, there's erosion in the home. There is, um, you know, uh, there needs to be some waterproofing on the inside. Uh, a total upgrade because it's an older home, um, and it's, it suffered a lot of damage from years. And sometimes our residents have not upgraded, you know, such as getting a new roof. We know when we need a new roof, in a sense. Uh, but some of them have not gotten new roofs. Some of them have not changed their gutters or downspouts. Um, you know, interior, things like that. So we can't foot, foot the bill for all of those upgrades. So we have to kind of be, um, we have to put ourselves in a box, in a sense. To say two thousand or maximum four thousand, you know? Because they, they share a responsibility too. We're here to assist with the um, you know, with the funding that we have and because we have an issue with the flooding uh, in the town. So I think we're, we're, we have to remember we're, our heart goes out, but we're here to assist in a, a heavy way. Ms. Chester.
Yes, I just, I, I, I feel like maybe the, it was a bit of sticker shock to hear the price tag for the town hall idea. And I guess I, I, again, I feel like, um, maybe I'm not understanding all the processes. But when do we talk about these things? Like, when do we talk about what we were all envisioning? And, and what would we be covering for residents and what are reasonable costs? Or, but I don't know, like, when do we really discuss the, the real details of like what we would do to town hall? And, you know, what's a, 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 the minimum? Kind of, you know, we've got to upgrade and fix in town hall. What would we do if we really, you know, wanted to go all in? And I just, I feel like I, I'm not clear on when we are discussing these things in real detail. And, and I guess I thought after we did the survey with the residents and that was around like Easter um, that we would, we'd have time. And then, you know, the summer was tricky with more floods. I don't know, I just, are we, is this the forum where we would be talking about that level of detail? Of, of realistically, what did we think we would be helping residents with? And what are actual reasonable costs? Because I, I think two thousand dollars is, is barely a, that, that will, you know, that would maybe do one thing for any one resident. Um, if that, I mean, labor costs are much higher, material costs are much higher. Um, and I, I guess obviously we, you know, this isn't totally, you know, a giveaway for residents. But it, the, I don't, I don't know, like, if we, if these are going to be tough choices, when do we talk about what's important and what are our values? And how are we prioritizing where we're all kind of hashing that out?
Thanks, Chester. Yeah, yeah. Um, Ms. Ms. McCully and then Mr. Barnes.
I think we also got to be realistic. We have to put a cap on it because we said this is, is open to every resident in the town. Whether they have flooded or whether they've had, you know, water runoff. So if we say we're going to give every resident two thousand dollars.
I mean.
We had, you know, that's, we have a lot of residents.
But that was never the model, I guess, you know, if we were going to come up with covered for like allowable expenses, things people could spend things on. I mean, and this is like, why aren't we, like, when do we have this discussion? When do we talk about what we were all visioning and when do we hash out what we can do? I, I guess, like, does that happen?
I guess, to me, I think we sort of have covered, you know, we had, we're good, we were going to put together saying, whether it would be landscaping, whether it would be gutters, would it be um, foundation work, but we were going to put a cap on it for citizen. You know, it's, we're, we're here to help you move on, but we can't fix what's been going on for years and years and years. And if the residents that have lived here for twenty, thirty years, this isn't a new thing. They know that the flame has been going on. They have had opportunities when we've had dry times to start, you know, doing some work around their, their houses. Uh, to me, the town hall, I think is sort of a priority because you have all these people crammed in to a small space. They need some room to move around. Plus, we need a place other than the rec center for our citizens to come. You know, to me, a nice, clean town hall where we could have gatherings with the citizens would be so much nicer than going down to the rec building where it's, it's nice. But it's not a real nice gathering place, I don't think, my, in my view.
Thank you, Ms. McCully. Uh, Mr. Barnes?
Uh, so Councilman Chester has a, a good, good question. What, uh, the conversation that's going to occur on the grant program is going to start when you receive the draft programs designed and outlined that I'm going to send out next week. And it has a whole, a list and array of things that qualify. And, and no, some of them are very inexpensive. Putting in a sewer backup during, uh, is four hundred dollars. Putting in a new sub-pump can be less than five hundred dollars. So lots of things can happen within a two thousand dollar budget. We're not going to manage that. We're not going to go out and find the contractor that says you're going to put in the sub-pump or you're going to put in the grading for my site. That's going to be up to the homeowner when they apply for that grant. But the list of qualified activities will, uh, they can go for. You wanted to have in their flood insurance premium, so that, that will be on the list. For renters, flood insurance um, premium will be on the list so that renters can have it. If every home in this town applied for the two thousand dollars, that's five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. So you can only do so much. So what towns are doing? And the program I'm going to present to you is being modeled after other towns. Glenn Arden's doing the exact same thing. Riverdale Park's doing the exact same thing. And they're using their ARPA funds to, to do that. But on top of this is also Prince George's County Rain um, check program. And when you do all the different things that are included in our program or the things that are in theirs, you not only can get the money from us, but you can also get the funds from the county for doing those um, improvements to your uh, site. So it can be more than two thousand dollars that you ultimately end up with. So I think when you, when you see the program and you, and we roll it out um, in October after you've grew, um, put your comments in and changed and massaged it, you'll be happy with it and it will help the um, citizens more. The, the question about the, are you going to get to see the town hall? I've sent you and gave you preliminary uh, design plans for town hall. And then, yes, once you hire the architect, but the architect isn't going to do any more preliminary work until he's brought on board, um, and, and actually hired, then you can change it out any way you want. He, he can redraw it, add rooms, take out rooms, reduce the cost any way that you can. He's looked at reducing the cost already because originally we put to him to have a second story uh, to go to uh, a second floor. And so he said, wow, that adds cost. So uh, he figured out a way to not do a second floor by extending the building uh, footprint on, on a single thing. So absolutely, um, as that process continues, the only thing I was doing with the ARPA money when Councilmember Turberville asked, I was trying to highlight what you had discussed over this last nine months because you've been discussing it for about nine months. What priorities you wanted to focus on and trying to accommodate those within the ARPA funds. So um, it can change and modify and you can decide to fund the um, project here at town hall in a different manner, using borrowing, for instance, through the um, uh, uh, Department of Housing and Community Development Loan Fund or using some of our reserve funds, um, for that matter, um, for that particular project. I don't know if that helps you or answers the question.
I guess it just isn't always clear, like, like, I, I feel like things get sort of shown here and then we're like, yes, no. And I just, I guess I expected in this role more, I don't know, more dialogue in more detail than, I, I don't know. Like, we get things to review and it, it isn't always clear, like, do I email back a lot of questions? Do we talk about it in detail at the meeting and things don't always, when they come by email, then they're not always on the agenda right after that. And I don't, maybe I just need to do a, a better job of asking to put things on the agenda. I don't know, sorry.
No, my, my job is, and part of my job is, I work for you guys. So all of the questions and all of the concerns that you have on those kinds of things, they need to come to me. Or you need to call up the mayor and say, mayor, we got, we got to talk about this in a, in an open forum and, and have some more discussion about it. But that's my job, answering all the questions that you can think of so that, that you feel comfortable when you get to this stage, when you're discussing or when you're making uh, action on it, that you've gotten everything that you ever wanted to have done um, with that project done, either through the mayor or through myself.
Um, so can I make a suggestion that we put ARPA funds on our work session agenda? As like a standing issue so that we can make sure we're coming back to it each month? That might be one thing. Rod, I found your, your feed, like everything you explained to be extremely helpful. Um, you know, for me, I'd like to think about sort of how we maybe might sequence things then with the project. So maybe we don't pursue the, the grant program and the um, uh, God, I'm sorry, my vocabulary is like, words are escaping my mind. Um, the work on town hall at the same time, but instead maybe we put like a tight deadline. You know, we, we give citizens like six months or something to apply for reimbursement or whatever for their expenditures related to flood mitigation. And then we know at that six month mark, okay, this is what is left. And then we know what our budget is from the ARPA funds for whatever we want to do with town hall. So that way, we're signaling to the community that like, we know the flood mitigation stuff is the most important thing. We want to make sure we've got all the funding available to be able to, to make sure that you get support in that space. And then we use the rest. And then the last thing I would add is that I would like us to think about maybe upping the threshold to like three thousand or four thousand. Because the damage is just extraordinary. And even if, I mean, I think we've got residents that are looking at twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars worth of work that they have to do. And it's not necessarily because they were sitting on their laurels for, for years. I mean, the storms are worse, like, we have experienced two hundred year flooding events within three years. Like, that's not really anybody's fault. So, um, I've said my piece now and I will put myself on you.
It, the only thing I would say is we have to kind of back into our timeline because we have to have the funds obligated by twenty twenty-four. So uh, December thirty-first, uh, and I think they have to be spent by twenty twenty-five. So um, the, the project with town hall, for instance, the per, uh, the design phase takes at least six months to nine months. A year for permitting and bidding and then a year for construction. So uh, town hall would not be completed following that timeline until twenty twenty-six. Um, potentially at the earliest. And so I do agree with you, uh, Councilmember Turberville. I think the flood mitigation is the, is the focus that needs to be first because we can outline that and make that happen quickly. Maybe that helps you with, with timelines and calendars.
Great. Okay, so um, I greatly appreciate your input and your comment. Um, it, it, Ms. Chester kind of, um, it, uh, disturbs me a little bit. On one side, the other side is that it, I'll get to the disturbance. But the one side is, um, we can, and I'm thinking, we started combining our, we didn't always do it and we don't always do it, but the, the last few months besides our recess, we combined our work session and our um, town meeting. And sometimes that does not allow a lot of time for long conversation. Um, and our personalities or, um, you know, the, the way we operate are different. And you need that breakdown and that, that conversation so you get it. So you know what we're doing going forward and you know how to um, educate our community. And um, uh, nothing is wrong with that and um, I need that too sometimes. And we also want to stay um, transparent with each other or as a council. We, we want to stay transparent with the um, residents. But with the council, it's important for me to um, allow you to be transparent and me to be transparent. So it may mean that we have to have a separate work session day again so that you can, we can have that conversation.
Yeah, that might be really helpful because I think a, as much as I do appreciate going back and forth and asking Rod questions and he always answers my questions. He's super patient and tolerant and I really appreciate that. But then, like, maybe I ask ten questions, maybe Betsy asks he'll be answering each of us separately, but then Betsy and I aren't necessarily having a dialogue. And maybe that's what I feel like is, is I'm like, when does that happen? Rod can interact with each of us individually and get our feedback and that shapes what he does. But then we have, I, how does he reconcile if we have two different, like, really different opinions or something? And maybe that's, not that I want more meetings, but but maybe that is something about having the two meetings so kind of back to back and a sort of feeling of like, oh, we just, you know, we're just really prepping for the meeting and not using the time to really discuss things and really make sure that we are all on the same page or that we're all understanding, you know, each other's questions and.
I, I, I like to hear the questions and the comments. Um, um, sometimes it gives me a, a broader view. Uh, Mr. Barnes and I talk consistently, so most of the time I already have it. And so what we have to do as a group is we have to get it together. So if it, I mean, that's what work sessions are for. Work sessions are for us to go ahead, hash it out, talk about it. Um, as long as we have to talk about it. And then when it comes town, down to the town meeting, it's just voting, you know, we're good because we've discussed it and we can educate um, our community and also each other, right? Because we all have our different skills and ability. So um, I appreciate the conversation and I appreciate your comment. It's just a little disturbing, but I got it. Because I, I feel that um, I'm open, Mr. Barnes is open, you know, you can always call. I get what you're saying that um, if, if, if Ms. Turberville is asking one question or, or five questions and, and you're asking five questions and they're being asked separately. Um, you know, maybe there's a question you have that, you know, Ms. Turberville had or, you know, they can be all combined and we're good. Great, got it. Thank you for that. Thank you. All right, let me go to our next item. What time is it? Six thirty-five. I want you to have a chance to get some water too. Before the meeting. Um, so what are we going to do with that? Um, with the um, gem, are we, do we want to talk about that some other time, a little bit more? Um, not vote on anything? It seems like it. It seems like, it seems like we need to.
We're against a deadline, Mayor, September thirty.
Oh.
For the thirty-seven hundred dollars or whatever?
Yes.
And it, what can, does that have to be used for this or?
Yes.
So it's a matter of, well, thirty-seven hundred, cool.
You don't have to use ARPA funds.
But it's the matter of our, our funds.
We can do it out of our regular budget and not touch ARPA funds. It's up to, for either one of you. We can do it out of our regular budget and not touch ARPA funds. It's up to for either one of you, either one.
I mean, I'm personally, I'm okay with moving ahead with this particular purchase. What I, what I think we need to balance is the flood mitigation and Town Hall. Renovation stuff. So I'd be okay with voting on this today. I'm voting yes.
Ms. Chester?
Yeah, probably the same. I think to Sarah's point, we just don't want to keep having a lot of what we sort of think of as like now small purchases at. Thirty thousand, twenty thousand, eighty thousand. We just need to be cognizant, but I do think, I like the idea of having an electric vehicle that. Can be driven around town. That makes sense.
Okay, good. I already know Ms. McCully, she said it was good.
But I don't like electric vehicles.
She doesn't want to ride in the back of the old gem anymore.
I know. That's safely, safe. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I'm all board.
He can put his tools in the backseat. Um, the next comment is comment. The next item is ARPA funds as well. Um, it's the Panoni, um, it's a proposal from Panoni for parking and zoning study. Um, forty sixth Avenue, Ingram and Lafayette. That's eleven thousand five hundred forty four.
Mayor, this, this was a project that uh Councilmember Turberville requested. Uh researched on to see what it would cost to think of the future over in the forty sixth Avenue Industrial Park. So what? What the scope of service on this would be, they had taken inventory of all the existing parking on forty sixth Avenue Lafayette and Ingram. They had reviewed the zoning, identified needed improvements for the parking and, and zoning. And then prepare um summary of findings, existing conditions, recommended improvements, and then of course uh review. And meet with us and address any comments. So um, this was a, a kind of out of our. This grew out of when we hired Panoni to do the traffic study over there. Um, this was something that came up as we discussed how. We were going to connect to Hyattsville, which is part of that study. And um, and then they rezoned that whole. Big warehouse of Mr. Johnson's into mixed use. So there could be a lot of redevelopment over there, which. I believe, and Councilmember Turberville, correct me if I'm wrong, um, she was concerned about, you know, how will we deal with the traffic? Uh parking and that would come with that kind of development.
Well, it was also, so quick Hillary preparation, it was also because the people who were gonna turn. That like, one of those warehouses into like the eco, I forget what it was called.
Market, the collective market?
Yeah, the eco collective or whatever, that part of the reason that fell apart was because of issues around.
Parking. Councilmember Chester, you had a question?
So is this like a, an addendum to that other study that they're doing or is it a totally kind of? Separate, like will they integrate it or it's just?
No, they, they treat it as separate. Originally, we looked at trying to do it as an addendum, but then they determined that. It was a real standalone by itself. Uh, the third project I'm having them take a look at is Mr. Johnson's crossing at. Kendallworth and Decatur. Uh, they're putting together a proposal to um, study that with the state. Trying to make some recommendations back to the state on how to improve that crosswalk there. So. They'll, they'll be back with that proposal at some point here. But yeah, this is separate, totally kind of separate. The good news is on this all is uh Mayor Gant. Um, well, actually, I think Councilmember Turberville um with a connection to uh Councilmember Joanne over in Hyattsville. Um, they are actually, we are working on a grant, dual grant application to talk about a pedestrian. Uh bike bridge across the railroad tracks. Um, that would happen um over phased in over five year. Period of time through grant dollars and Panoni is studying that in their original. Traffic study that you requested. And that also meets with our economic development strategic plan as one of the goals that's. In that. So very exciting what all you're doing with forty sixth Avenue Ingram and all of that area.
You said bike, bike bridge?
I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, what?
You said a bike bridge across the track?
Yeah, so walk, pedestrian bike bridge across the tracks.
Like the one over in Bourbon Heights?
Well, I'm not familiar with that one. The one I uh they compared it to is the one down by National Harbor that goes across nearby the Wilson Bridge. But it, it may be like that, but that's what the um, that's what the um. Grant and the design and the study would all look at.
Yeah, because they built, they built one over there by the old MVA over there in Bourbon Heights. And it goes across. I was wondering, uh, something like that.
I can't see it.
I want to say a good thirty years that bridge has been there, that pedestrian wall thing. It goes where the MBA. And College Park used to be. It goes over the railroad tracks to uh Lake Arbanese. And it is, that thing is a good thirty years old.
Oh. The, is it wooden?
No, no, it's, it's concrete and uh steel.
And metal, yes, true.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, I think it's been there for a while. For, it goes from Burwen and to Burwen Heights.
So is this something that we're interested in? I would say we should be. Yeah, we'll vote yay. Okay, superb. This is great. I'm excited about this. Um, and so the next item is the um wood fence replacement at Town Hall. Because it's not in good shape. Thousand three hundred and twenty.
It's held up with a stick.
Aren't we all?
I know, I know.
Any questions, comments? Okay, so everyone agrees? Get that fence taken care of.
Be damaged in any kind of upgrade construction. Like, I don't want to see someone backing a backhoe over.
Oh.
So the next item, um, I'm trying to be quick. The next item is um, just Ms. Chester wanted um. Just an update on the flood mitigation and I, I can do it as well in our regular meetings, should we have any visitors. We met actually today and that was just so um great and timely. And um. I actually asked, I talked to, you know, we've talked to many legislators, um, uh texts. Emails back and forth. And finally, I guess Jolene Ivy said enough is enough. I'm calling a meeting. I'm going to get them to you. So she did. And um, we had the meeting today. Uh Mayor Thompson from Riverdale, his town administrator attended, as well as Mayor James from uh Bladensburg. Um, of course, Mr. Barnes and myself, uh Councilmember Galeros. And um DPTW, um, is that um Charlie?
Yes.
And then they have a new director. I don't, I can't recall his name, Mr. Barnes does. You know his name?
Yes. Director Johnson.
Johnson. He's new, but he is so in tune. Would you say, Mr. Barnes?
I, I'm sorry, it's Director Mike Thompson. Yes, I agree with you. He, he really is sharp.
Yes. So um, the greatest thing, the one thing he said is the pumping station is functioning, functioning properly. Um, most of any issue was blamed on the flooding, of course, the hundred year, two hundred year flooding. And our system not being able to take it in so short of uh time span. And that makes sense. The other thing is um the knowledge of our residents as well as ourselves. That when it rains, it does not necessarily mean that the pumping station is going to turn on because there might not be a need. Um, and then also there are some other issues that cause um the pumping station not to turn on. Um, such as the water hasn't risen to a certain height because of certain things. Um, we get the water runoff from, I don't know if we want to call it runoff, it's not runoff. Right? Is it, I guess it could be called runoff from Riverdale, um College Park, you know, University Park. We get that. Into Edmiston, which is why our system was upgraded in two thousand eight. Um, and we did talk about the claw, which is called the screen. Cleaner.
Bar screen, bar screen cleaner.
Bar screen cleaner. So the big claw is called the bar screen cleaner. And one of my questions and comments was. That we actually witnessed that bar screen cleaner not operating properly. Uh, did they say that it didn't?
Correct. They also said then they, when it didn't operate, ma- uh automatically, they manually.
Yes.
Do what the task was.
But we didn't see that, right? Ms. Hillary, we didn't see that.
The woman there at the pumping station said clearly that she could not get it to go manually. And she was trying very hard to do that. And we were standing there watching the water at the tippy top of it with all the crud in it.
Right, well, right. Uh, but they, they didn't take responsibility, but they did. They took responsibility by attending the meeting. Um, and it wasn't a meeting where it's like, ah, rah, 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 rah. Um, but they provided a lot of um. Mr. Johnson provided knowledge or information about um natural uh fixes for the issue. Which makes a whole lot of sense if we can make it work. So um, he brought some background to that. They talked about. Monica Young made a one, a wonderful suggestion, uh YouTube, and explaining to our residents about. How the pumping station works. Of course, the purpose, um, what happens when the um. They don't use the word archimetric screws. What did he say? The, the screws?
No, he did say Archimedes.
He did, but he said they call it something else. I couldn't write it down, I was driving. Yeah, but the archimedes tr- screws, when do they kick in and what do they do? Um, not everyone has had a tour. Uh, uh, when uh should the pumping station come on? The pumping station doesn't come on necessarily when it rains. Um, you know, what's the grabber? What does it do? And what happens when it's malfunctioning as we see it? So they talked about that. They acknowledged the fact that. The storm drains need to be um, need some attention because they're made for ten year uh lifespan.
No, for a ten year flood event.
Flooding, flood event? Okay. So um, they do need to come up with some creative idea. As to what we can do in the future with our storm drains. Um, they also said they need partners to assist them. Um, with this, this is not just DBTW, but there are other um entities that play a part. And we agree. Right? We agree. They also um, I charged the council with um. Uh allowing or allotting funding for residents who are dealing with flooding. Because um there, it's never enough damage as a whole to get any funding from FEMA or MEMA. So um, they thought that was really something to have a conversation about and to look into doing. Uh, Mr. Barnes?
Yeah, the other thing, I think uh this will answer uh Councilmember Chester wanting to have a, a, some. Consulting work done. They had two things in that area. They want to complete a, a complete flood risk assessment for each of our communities. And so they're budgeting that for FY twenty four. It'll take twelve to eighteen months for that report, but that report then will. Study our hydrology and study where our problems are and what those recommendations, what the risks are, what, what recommendations are, are needed from that. Also, a study was done prior to two thousand and eight, so they're gonna pull that study back out. Uh, provide it to all of us and uh look at the list of recommendations in that study. And what um maybe is applicable, but which maybe isn't. The, the method that the mayor was talking about, uh Mr. Thompson was thinking on is retention ponds, very large retention ponds that serve. Dual purpose as a park, as park area and also as stormwater collection points when there's um really big storms.
Called something else, but we can't remember.
Yeah, we both missed the exact name of, of what he called them, but um, he said we need to talk, they needed to reach out to the railroads. To see about getting bigger culverts underneath the railroad uh crossings that go across the Anacostia and. Um, they talked about um doing um, uh let's see. Using the state revolving loan program uh for funding for some of the capital improvements potentially to upgrade the stormwater system. So it was, uh, you know, overall, it was a wonderful meeting, great, great uh communication. Uh indicating that they would continue to meet, uh continue to work with the communities on so the solutions. Um, on, on this and working with the other departments. So Riverdale Park brought up how difficult it is to. Have communication between Department of Environment, DPI, and um.
Yeah.
DW, uh DP, DPWT. So um, so that, he seemed really receptive. Um, to that, so it was good.
And we, we did a good thing. Um, we did a good thing, Edmiston, we did. So um, thank you. By. Um, pressuring the right people. And so um, that comes with relationships. So that was a really good meeting.
That, you know, the only, I think the only um thing that the residents are gonna have a hard time with, there's no quick fixes, there's no quick. Solutions. And these are all long term, long looking towards the future kind of solutions that. Are going to cost, you know, lots of money and lots of um, of effort. But um, at least. If we don't get them in the capital improvement plan for the county, they would never happen. So if at least we get the study and we know what. Needs to be put in there, then, you know, systematically over the next five, ten years, those things can get corrected. He did, he's a real strong believer in climate change and, and said it isn't, you know, the sit- situation isn't going to cure itself. It's, it's gonna just keep getting worse.
And then just for us to know what's, oh, go ahead. I think it's gonna be helpful to know what, what would most benefit or most mitigate our impact so that. In this, what is obviously going to be a really long, sort of drawn out, long um complex fix. That we would be able to be advocating that, you know, some of, something that might benefit or mitigate our risks, like, you know, that can be. In year one, year two, that, you know, if it's going to be a multi-year project to just do what we can to, to know what would be the. The most impactful for us and then we pushing for that to be one of the earlier phases if at all possible. If they can make those kind of decisions. Then just.
Yeah, that's, that's what he was talking about, feedback. I mean, that would come in the study process, but. We also have a project hanging out with Department of Environment that they're going to help us figure out. Um, they have in their capital plan for something at forty ninth and Decatur. I, I think it's some kind of retention ponds in people's backyards, but um. Um, I don't know that for sure and I haven't been able to get an answer. So Charlie Griffin, I believe, mayor indicated he would get that. Uh, information and get it to us. Is that in that correct?
Yes, yeah.
And we might want to follow up and just talk to the people over on the green team in Riverdale Park because they have that in the backyards. Of some of their residents over near the man, the manor house, uh Riverdale Manor. And they, they have some thoughts and I don't want to say strong opinions, but not that they don't think it's necessary, but. The incarnation of it, that they, and so if that is really on the table, we might want to talk to them and just get a sense of like. If you could do it differently, how would you do it or? If it's, if it's. Yeah, not that they're totally opposed to having it, they see the value, but there are things about it that they, they don't like and so.
You mean the pond in their backyard?
Yeah.
Mosquitoes for one thing, but go ahead.
Well, I think what most of citizens should do right away is get the daggone flood insurance. Is that will, it, the, the flooding will never end. Flooding will never end. This is always gonna be a flood. Unless they put these houses up on stilts. There's gonna be a flood. Will they be as bad as they are now? I hope not. But if you want to protect yourself. Get the daggone flood insurance. Protect yourself.
So if I could say, then we're gonna um, break for our regular meeting. Um, thanks, Ms. McCully, you're right. Thanks, Ms. McCully, you're right. Mr. Barnes put together on our, in the newsletter that's going out to our residents. Flood information, ideas, what you should do, rain barrels, all of those things. It's going to be outlined in bright colors, our new, our newsletter in color is beautiful. But, oh yeah, it won't be in color, will it? No, it won't be. But it actually outlines and gives them ideas, information, how to contact the county. And this is our way of approaching the flood mitigation for our residents. So and insurance is on there, is insurance on there, yep. Websites, everything, pictures, it's laid out really nice. And it's not a whole lot where you go, oh, my God, this is so much, but it's really good. So that's what we're doing as the town for our residents, providing that information. Acting chief, were you saying something? Oh, you're just tired of just being here looking at us. Guess what? You have another meeting to do.
I'm listening to you guys, not information you guys are passing.
Good, good. Okay, if there's nothing else, is there anything else you think we need to review before our meeting? Otherwise, you have seven oh five to be back. Is that good?
That's good.
Good for me. All right, see you later.